We'll call this meeting in the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Ray, would you read our mission statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that will guide it, growth, honors, and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and a high quality of life.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under public input. Before we get into public input, I wanted to, I want to clear the air a little bit. Can you guys hear me? Can we turn the sound up? Is that any better? Can you hear me now? It's not a Verizon commercial, but... Does this one work any better? Okay. I will try to speak up. So many of you know the two discussions that I brought up at the last council meeting, and I'm sure that's why many of you are here. The first issue I want to bring up is the discussion on Silver City's participation in the mayor's against illegal guns. That topic, for one, had been on my desk for about three to four months. I was approached by them and asked if we would consider joining. I had no idea what they were about. I explained to the gentleman that called me and has emailed me repetitively that I found the title to be somewhat suspect, and I would do research as I had time. Well, three, four months go by and I didn't have time. So what I did at the last council meeting was I brought the topic to you, and I said, "I don't know what to do with this, and I am requesting input." And that is all I did. Many of you have received in the last couple of days a postcard from the NRA, and that postcard starts off, the very first sentence is, "Not factual. I never expressed an interest or an intent to join the mayor's against illegal guns." I said that it was, that I was approached by them, and I requested input. Many of you provided me the input. Some of you provided me very good information on why that was not a desirable organization for us to associate with. I accepted that input. I acted on that input a week ago. It was a week ago today that I notified them that I had no interest in signing on with that organization, and the NRA kind of proved why. And I'll tell you, that flyer that they sent out, at least the first sentence that I read, was not factual, and that is exactly the fear that we have when we associate with other organizations, that they take what our intent is and what is blatantly obvious, and they can twist it and turn it to set any agenda that they want. And after having the, the education provided to me, I made the decision that I would not risk that happening on this topic. On the issue, on the second issue, which was my request that we not have deadly weapons in a council meeting, that as well, and I got a couple of emails yesterday that, that specifically mentioned a New Mexico constitutional issue. So we broke out the, the books and started doing the research on it, and it's rather interesting. The part, there is a part in the New Mexico Constitution that states that the New Mexico legislature shall lean towards local control. The state of New Mexico as well takes the liberty to impose bans on guns in certain public places, such as the state fair. However, one of the letters that I got yesterday actually attached a New Mexico Supreme Court case to that letter, or to my email, and in reading that, and if you're interested, it's Baca versus New Mexico Department of Public Safety, and that was the, the mayor of Albuquerque. And it's, it's actually on a different topic, but the Supreme Court took that case and as they dissected it, they examined the intent of the legislature and the intent of the Constitution in creating the part that states that local governments, municipalities, and counties shall not create laws that interfere with the right to keep or bear arms, or any incident of the right to bear arms. So our, our lawyers looked at, well, what the heck did I do? And one is, we didn't create a law, so there was no council action, so we didn't really violate that. However, my statement that I did not want deadly weapons, specifically firearms, it applies to, because firearms are the preemption in the Constitution, not knives, guns, anything else we can find to kill each other with. So we look at, what is my job up here in running this meeting? And actually, when you look at the duty that I have to run the meeting, there are many aspects where one could claim rights under the First Amendment for freedom of speech. However, if somebody sat in the back, or in the front, or in the audience somewhere and just yelled out throughout the entire meeting, it would drastically interfere with the, the operations and function of your government. And I'm quite confident that none of you that, that took the time to provide me input would ever want that to happen. It's also a sign that the, many of the emails that I receive refer to the Constitution, which means, as I do, you support the structure of our government, the Constitution that our government operates under, and all the aspects of it. So I have an obligation to maintain the decorum of the meeting. I have a constitutional prohibition from banning certain things, and it, it is my interpretation, as well as several of the, the guidance that I've received, that the intent of the Constitution is that I not touch the issue. And I won't touch the issue. The comments that I made at the last meeting that banned deadly weapons from this meeting, I will take back. However, as somebody recently pointed out in a, in an interview that was posted on the Gila Forum, openly carrying a firearms into a public meeting where we address people's rights, people's money, we create the laws that are adjudicated in the courts of New Mexico that firearms are not allowed in, these topics can be extremely emotional, and rightfully It is extremely personal when somebody makes an investment in their property, and it could be their, every dime that they have ever had in their life has gone into providing a property and a home for their family. We need to make sure, as we go through these proceedings, and many of those proceedings we do as a judicial body, to ensure compliance of our land use code. It is not as a town council. The town council acts as a judicial body, and I as the judge. We need to make sure, and I'm sure that many of you will agree, that we make this meeting and this room as comfortable and as welcoming for everyone to participate in the functions of this meeting. The state law states that I have to allow people to attend a public meeting, which is pretty much any of the council meetings where public business is discussed and there's a quorum of the body that is gathered, with, I think there's eight exceptions. And those exceptions, if you have an agenda, they're on the back. So I would just ask that we be considerate of each other, that we not do any kind of actions that would intimidate anybody else, and I don't, and it's been, it's been made very well aware that an open carry of a firearm would possibly intimidate somebody. And it's the same way that I've conducted my hearings, the meetings that I've had. I've had people up at the podium that did not speak very good English, that had maybe not completed school, but they were entrepreneurs and they were trying to make a living, and they were counting on this body making a decision on a licensing issue for them that allowed them to take care of their family, and to operate a business and create jobs in this community. And as I've conducted those hearings, I've done my best to calm them down, explain to them that there's a lot of formality that we have to go through, but feel free to speak freely. And that's really my intent. Out of, if you wrote me a letter opposing either of the two issues, and by the way, there was, there was many letters that opposed one and supported one, I tried to respond to you. If I didn't, I apologize, but you have to understand I'm one guy, and I got a bunch of emails in the last few days, not to mention the phone calls that the clerk handled. So in that response, I did state that I do own firearms, I do support the Constitution, the Second Amendment, the First Amendment, and all other amendments that are attached. It has never been my intent to violate your rights or mine. There was tons of misinformation that was put out after that. There was a couple of sentences in the, in the Daily Press that people finished the paragraph on their own. Well, you asked for transparency in your government. I gave it to you, but I ask you to come back and be informed. And I can just tell you, I'm, I'm a little disappointed. The only other meeting that we've had that had this attendance was when we closed the skate park. The function of your government is extremely important to you on many, many issues. When we had the skate park issue, there was standing room only, there was people out on the front that couldn't get in the door, and we resolved that issue, we moved on to the next item of business, and this room was empty. And you care to guess what the next item of business was? We took money out of everybody that is connected to our sewer system's pocket. We raised your sewer rates in the very next item, and there was nobody here. I have numerous openings on committees that I have been begging for months and months to get people to sign up for. Please be active. I understand that when somebody threatens the constitutional rights that are given to you both by the country and the state, that it is very emotional, and it should be, but so should many, many other things that come before this body. And I truly hope that you will stay here tonight, you will participate in the meeting, you will come at the next meeting, and you'll participate, and you will continue to send us input and letters on the other issues that involve you. This is a representative, a representative government, and we have gone to great lengths to make sure that we are open and transparent, but we need you to participate as well, and we're not seeing that. And that is extremely, extremely important. I could tell you, excuse me, I'm talking too much, my mouth's getting dry. The law states that whenever we appoint a commission that has the authority to effect policy, that it must be conducted in an open meeting, and it must follow the Open Meetings Act. The information is open information that is available to the public. I took that one step farther six years ago and made all of our committees follow the Open Meetings Act. We have advisory committees that do nothing but advise us, that give us information on a specific topic, and every one of them is required by me to follow the Open Meetings Act, which means you get notified when those meetings happen, and you have an opportunity to participate in them. Please participate. So I really hope that that lays the issue to rest. You can go back to your business with comfort that I have no intention of violating your rights, or my rights as a firearm owner, or at least three fifths of the council that I, that I'm aware of that own firearms. So we will go back and we will conduct the business of the town, and all I ask is that you respect each other, you respect your neighbors, and you respect the government and the need for the government to function in an open, honest, transparent, and in a manner that we can all participate in. So, thank you. So the next item on the agenda, okay, I got a really bad habit of mumbling, so those of you in the back, if I start getting away from the microphone, just wave at me or something, and I'll try to get closer. The next item on the agenda is public input, and the first person that I have signed up is Mr. Jim Kelly, reference to poet laureate program. And I just remind you that you have five minutes to speak, and I'll try to give you a one-minute warning, if you're looking at me. Thank you.
Won't take too long. Just wanted to update you, Mayor and Council, on the work the poet laureate committee has been doing. We now have a selection committee and an application process that is going to work for us. We took great care in finding the people for the poet laureate selection committee. We, as, as to, to gender distribution, we have four females on the committee and three who are not. We have all, all age groups, just about, thirties, forties, fifties, sixty-plus, there are seven of them. We've talked with Arts and Cultural, we've talked with Embrac, we've talked with the library, we've talked with a lot of people, and we had quite a few people interested in being on the committee. We didn't want to choose any working poets, either publishing or performing their work for the committee, because we wanted the people, while qualified some way, to be completely separate from that community. And we have a really good cross-section of seven people. These people have all been in contact with the chair, who's J.J. Wilson, the writer-in-residence at Western, and they'll be meeting and putting out announcements, calling for applications, and hopefully by the end of April, hopefully, we will be able to inaugurate the Silver City area's first poet laureate. So that's our stand, status right now. Our committee, the one I was chairing, is no longer in service, and the actual selection application, selection committee is now meeting. So, and, and also, just to continue, Mayor Marshall, on what you were saying, I am not carrying any concealed or open poetry on my person at the moment. So I think that's important to know. That's all I have for you. And if you have any questions, J.J. Wilson, your man, from here on out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person on the list is Tom Joines, and apologize if I screwed up your name.
No, you didn't. You're one of the few people that don't. I want to thank you for your opinion on the gun ban. I'm also nervous about people carrying open. Having taken the concealed carry, it's a different class of people that carry concealed. It's not cheap, it's a one-day class in a classroom, it's qualification, everything else. While open carry has no restrictions, so I don't have any problem with you wanting to ban open carry in city council meetings. Thank you.
The next one, I believe, is W.T. Klein, reference to gun ban. Did I say that right? Okay, I don't see him.
Thank you very much for your time, Mayor Marshall. I came here with the same opinions that some of the other people have pertaining to the gun control. I'm glad you made a good decision. One of the things that I do believe is that people are ignorant. We've discussed the gun control issue. I myself have never applied for a concealed gun permit. I have no weapons, I don't carry a pocket knife. I have, at times, seen people use the concealed weapon. That intimidates me. That scares me, because I don't know when they're having dinner at a restaurant if they're consuming alcohol. One of the reasons why I give up hunting, because alcohol and firearms is very prevalent. I see not so much nowadays, nowadays as I used to, you go to the drifter, you go to a liquor-selling establishment, and there's firearms that are visibly present in the vehicle. Now, one of the things that people don't realize is there are limitations in where a person can carry an open carry or a concealed carry. Chief, if you might want to correct me, you cannot carry a concealed or open firearm in a city, county, state, federal building. You cannot carry a firearm concealed or open in a school system. You cannot carry a firearm in a liquor-selling establishment. I may be wrong, but I, I think that's the way I understand it. Now, a lot of people do not own, know this. A lot of people have the right in your homes, if you don't want to have a person carrying an open carry or concealed carry, and you know they're going to come in as a visitor, as a guest, you can ask them not to carry that firearm in your homes. The same thing with a business. They can locate a, put a, or put a sign that says, "No concealed or open carry." Now, open carry, I don't feel intimidated by not carrying a open carry or a concealed. I rely on the chief of police. One of the drawbacks, there's two drawbacks that I'm very concerned with, is the number of law enforcement officers that have suffered injuries because of the nature of their work. What happens? Now we get into the judicial system. I'm not going to point fingers at the district attorneys, I'm not going to point fingers at the governor, at the mayors, or police chiefs. To me, when a person commits, is under the commission of killing somebody or shooting from a vehicle, it's a done deal. I think that laws should be enhanced. I think that juveniles should not be allowed to carry firearms. Throw the book at them. I'll pay extra money. When I was called in to be a jurist, I had the local judge tell me that I was not going to get away by contradicting all the instructions. My instructions were very valid. My personal opinion is, if the law enforcement community has already done investigation, has arrested a person, is going into the magistrate's court, and then is going to district court, sorry, folks, the man's guilty. I hope that we pass, as we pass the death penalty again. I do not believe in a 14-year appeal system. When a person is executed by a perpetrator, that person deserves his just treatment, now, not later. I don't believe in the governor, I don't agree with the presidents, I don't care whoever it is, when they grant freedom from prison because time has been spent. We need to take, as citizens, we need to take that act to heart. Thank you very much.
That was the last on the public input list. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Maronis, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this, you know, when we take this, this job of representing the town and being a counselor, you know, we have some pretty specific things that we're working on. Mainly, it's, it's to, to keep the town safe, the town healthy, keep the welfare intact, and generally speaking, you know, make, keep, make sure that there's good, good avenues of commerce, that the roads are good, and, and that our infrastructure is safe and sound, and helps the economy, and such like that. But when we take our oath, we do, as part of our oath, we, we're, we, we say that we will uphold the, the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution, and that is, that is extremely important, and, you know, as, as the mayor was, was articulating, there are, you know, there, there's some very specific laws that the state constitution mandates that really applies to us here locally. But, but as is much importance, and actually of the utmost importance, is, is the Constitution of the United States, and even though I do not like acting on federal issues, I prefer our citizens to motivate our federal representation via their vote. It is sometimes important for us to, you know, talk about and discuss these issues as they, as they come in front of us. I'm very glad that the mayor solicited input, as opposed to taking a, a solicitation and whether he just threw it in the trash, or if he just signed on, as opposed to that, I'm really glad that he solicited input from the, from the people. You know, during that time, I, I sat back, and as opposed to wanting to give immediate input at the last meeting, I, I thought, you know, I, if I start talking at that point, I'm going to be talking mostly from emotions and such, and in all reality, I'd rather sit back, listen to what people are, are, what kind of input I might receive after the mayor brings this, brings this to a point. And I, I look at, in this, in this avenue that we're looking at in the gun issue, you know, we, we have the form of, we're a republic, our, our government is a republic. Historically speaking, republics are very fragile governments, and in many cases, you know, when, when the Constitution was drafted, there was teeth given to the people to ensure the perpetual existence of, of this country, and, and that teeth was the Second Amendment. And if we want, if we do not want our country to, to succumb to the fragile nature of, of a republic, I, I think we definitely need to make sure we do not deteriorate the Second Amendment, and I appreciate what, what the, the mayor's research and his conclusions as such. As far as, you know, the, keeping the decorum of, of our council meetings, generally speaking, I think we've had a very good decorum. Very little intimidation, though there has been some, some reference as such. You know, I, I, there's been a few times I've actually traveled to the meetings, and I actually had my gun with me, and I thought, you know, I'm just leaving that in the truck. I, you know, I, I have no business bringing that in here, and I hope other people will And I hope other people would follow suit. Because definitely, we do not want to intimidate people in here. But, but also, I, I really appreciate the mayor's further research and, and his conclusions to that. And what I would just add to that is, is hopefully, as a respect to everybody participating in the meetings, that, you know, maybe they'll keep their, their guns at home, or, or whatever, just concealed, where, where no one has to worry about it. But of, of, what I really feel is, is a tremendous amount of appreciation for the transparency and the openness that, that the mayor has had in questioning the citizens, saying, "Bring me input. I don't know about this subject. I don't know about these groups. I have concerns. Share your ideas." And, and I'm really glad with how the, how everything transpired. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
I have a written statement here. I want to express my support for the mayor's call for reasonableness and consideration for others. I know that there are many good citizens of this town who own guns, as I do. When it comes to attendance at town council meetings, I would hope that the need to be a good neighbor wins over, out over the need to show off your right to bear arms. Look, I am a combat veteran, very familiar with weapons and their use. Why, I'm not come to this meeting carrying a weapon, even though it's my right to do I can tell you that if I'm sitting up here and looking down at armed citizens, I might get a bit nervous. I imagine others would be a bit nervous as well. And that would interfere in the open and relaxed way that the government functions in Silver City. I appeal to your good judgment. Leave your weapons at home. Thank you.
Settle. Settle. Yes. Councilor Thompson.
No comment.
Councilor Bedison.
I, I, I just want to say that Councilor Ray, and the mayor, and Councilor Maronis have expressed my views. Myself, I am also a gun owner. I work at the university. I do not take my gun to the university. It's never on any university property. I'm on a lot of university property all the time. I know where, where it can and cannot be. So, I respect the mayor for asking for the public's opinion. That's something we do on a daily basis, and at every council meeting, we ask for your input. And I hope that all of you that provided input on the subjects the mayor requested input upon will continue to give us input on other matters that do affect you. Everything that we do at this table is something that does affect you, and does affect your livelihood in the town, and please do participate. I appreciate everything that you said, and you were actually, once again, very eloquent. I've used that word before. Aside from that comment, I do have three more I'd briefly like to make. I need to embarrass a fellow counselor and congratulate him and his business partner, Maronis and Kootenai, for being named the Small Business Development Center's Small Business of the Year for the state of New Mexico. So, Maronis and Kootenai was given that decision. I'm very impressed by that. And I know that you'll have to go up on February 9th, as William mentioned today, at Rotary in the Col, to accept your award at the Rotunda, I believe.
That's great.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I also want to invite the public, as well as the town council, to the 2012 WMU Founder's Day. It's going to be on February 10th. And in particular, I want to invite the council to the WMU Museum's exhibition opening, which is a centennial of New Mexico Statehood event. It's listed on their website as a centennial event. The exhibition is called "Aspiration, Politics, and Willpower: The People Behind the Formation of the Territorial Normal School at Silver City." And the reason why I'm inviting the council, as well as the townspeople, is because you will find out that the town of Silver City was instrumental in the formation of the university. It was actually the town council that provided the land upon which the university sits. And Mayor John Fleming was instrumental in that action. So, please do come. The opening reception is February 10th at 4:30 P.M. And if the mayor's available, hopefully, he will be there. If not, I will be standing in for him, doing double duty as mayor pro tem, and as the director of the university museum. And then we have the university president will be there as well. And one last thing. Those of you who know about the Whippe-Armijo fire this past Sunday? Monday?
Sunday.
Sunday, know that the fire danger is once again becoming extreme in the state of New Mexico and our part of the area. Please be careful with what you do with any hot ashes from your wood stove, where you discard your cigarette ashes, anything you might do in burning trash outside. The Whippe-Armijo fire burned 1,316 acres in less than six hours. And your volunteer fire department, as well as the Silver City Fire Department, and New Mexico Forestry came to the rescue. I appreciate everything that they did, and want to congratulate them in putting that fire out as quickly as possible, and for staying out there through, I believe, Monday night, making sure that it didn't come back up again. And please do support this municipality, along with others, in seeking to be able to ban fireworks in extreme drought conditions. I mean, extreme. There's, it's outlined in the bills that are being put forward. It has to be extreme. There are several bills. Please support us in trying to get that permission, so that what happened this past year does not happen again in New Mexico. Because it's not the fireworks necessarily, it's the ignition of it. It's the lighting of the match. It's the lighting of any instrument that could set something on fire. So, we hope that you will do that. And thank you again for being here, and hope that you stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
As many of you know, that I take on the job of going to Santa Fe every year for the legislative session, and working the bills that are of interest to the town. And I currently have, I have 21 bills on my list, and, and the bulletin that the municipal league puts out. There, the bills range anywhere from capital projects that affect the town directly. There's $7 million on the general obligation bond list for Western. And I'm sure many of you are aware that there's been some meetings to discuss the lack of recreational facilities, both in the town, and the fact that the pool at Western suffered a major leak, and has to have some humongous amounts of work done to it. And that's not going to directly impact the town, but it has an indirect effect, as we're working on building our partnership better with Western, and will allow these facilities to be used by the citizens of the entire county. There's a, there's a bill to allow and regulate the reserve officer programs. There's a bill on rulemaking that states when the state agencies, many of the bills that you see out there empower staff, secretaries, other staff, to create rules that, in effect, really create the, the boundaries of the legislation. Many times, those rules are created in, in the dark, and there's no requirement that they be done in, in the sunshine of the public. This bill, and this is not the first year that it's run, but this is a bill that would make rulemaking subject to open hearings. And I would definitely support that. There's, the allocations that are on the list for the drinking water fund are out there. The colonias fund, the planning money for, that comes out of New Mexico Finance Authority. There is a bill to divert the grocery receipts tax from fireworks, to create a fireworks safety fund. And that would go to the state fire marshal, and, and I believe, New Mexico State Forestry to put out that, that project. There's another effort to enable a curfew around the state. Senate Bill 5 is the one that Councilor Bedison just referred to. And that was a bill that I've actually worked on all year. And I worked with Senator Feldman and Senator Rue. They were both in Silver City, and we've had some phone discussions. The, the big hangup was, one, we can regulate the source of ignition on anything but fireworks. And what we're trying to do is balance that out for public safety, that if there is truly a fire danger, that local governments and the governor would have the ability to regulate the sale use of all fireworks, not just the select few that we can now. The fireworks industry's concern was basically that I could go off on a whim, or the council could go off on a whim, and we could get 50 emails that say, "We hate fireworks," and just go ban them. And we would essentially kill the industry in the state. We would take numerous jobs out of the market. So, the fireworks industry demanded, and I, and I respect, that we put some criteria in that bill, that make sure that we're using scientific data to make our decision, that we truly have a threat, and not just a beef with fireworks. And so, I believe what it was called, and I worked with Gary Benavides, he's a county fire marshal, or county fire wildland coordinator, something like that. And we sent off to the senators that we should use the national fire danger rating. And that is based on scientific fuel models, and moisture content, and true data that says whether we actually have the fuel to burn, and how likely it is to burn, and what type of fire behavior we can expect when it does ignite. And so, that would prevent us from, from going crazy on fireworks. Some of the other bills that are, that are kind of interesting are some other diversions of grocery receipts tax. One would be on public radio stations, and one would be on a dialysis services. There is a bill to allow the development of a transportation district, which would allow the creation of funding to support transportation infrastructure. And there is a bill out there that could potentially provide the funding for the narrowbanding of radios and interoperability. And that comes basically out of 9/11, or 9/11, that we're all very familiar with, when all the different agencies responded, and none of them could talk to each other. So, there are some deadlines that are rapidly approaching, that we all must have interoperable capabilities to speak agency to agency, and, as well as they split the frequencies again. And the last time that happened was under the Clinton administration, when they split the frequencies, and that's pretty much how they balanced the budget. Those frequencies become very, very valuable in the commercial world. And is, is also very important to us, as we live within interference range of the international border. And Mexico has already submitted a significant claim for a number of our frequencies, and physics states we got to work with them. Because if we don't, right now, the state fire frequency happens to be 154310. Just south of here, you can actually hear a Mexican propane company running on the state fire frequency. If you go down to Juarez, it's a, in El Paso, you hear a taxi company that's running on the frequency designated for New Mexico's fire operations. So, it's really important that we coordinate international to ensure that our frequencies work. And the other issue is, is the severance bonds, and that funds all the, the infrastructure. And you can actually go on the internet, it's Senate Bill 65, if you want to look at it, and see what projects that the, the senate is proposing that would be a boost to our economy, and fix our highways and bridges and other public buildings. So, I will be continuing to follow that. If you find bills that are of interest to you, and you would like to solicit my, my input, or you would like to help guide our, our actions on that, or just bring it to my attention, please get ahold of me. And we'll put that on the list. And this list is about three days old. But the senate works Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, and took off Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, I didn't have a whole lot of more, more bills to add, since they took three days off out of the first five, out of the first six. So, I'll be back up there. Any other council comments?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none. Next item on the, excuse me. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the town council from January 10th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2012, regular meeting of the town council.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion. Hold on, I'm choking.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the town council, January 10th, 2012. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the special meeting of the town council, January 12th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the revised minutes as presented of the special meeting of the town council of January 12th, 2012.
Is there a second? We can, we can amend it.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Councilor Maronis?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we did not meet at the Grand County Administrative Center, that we met at the Silver City Annex, on Hudson Street.
I accept that amendment.
Any other?
Catch it.
Yeah, it's, it's basically a clerical correction. Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry.
None of us cut it before. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meetings, special meeting of the town council, January 12th, 2012, as revised, to indicate the location as the Silver City Annex. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is under reports. Mr. Brown, did you want to do yours, or do you want to go straight to the listed? First report on the agenda is High Desert Humane Society's Animal Intake Report for 2011 by Heidi Sexton. Welcome.
Good evening, council, staff, Mayor Marshall. As, as you're aware, the High Desert Humane Society and Animal Shelter has an agreement with the town of Silver City to house animals. And even though our agreement goes from July to June, we do our numbers and statistics on a, on a calendar year. You should have the spreadsheet, I think, in your packets. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I was glad to see that although we had a slight increase in 2010, that we had a very nice decrease in 2011. And I'd like to hope that that's because of responsible breeding and spaying and neutering. I don't know. I'll, I'll take it. We do provide a monthly report to Chief Reynolds, which breaks it down a little bit differently. I don't know if you see that report, if you're interested in that at all. It breaks it down on why they're coming into the shelter, whether they've been impounded, picked up as strays, or owner turn-ins. I don't know if you're interested in those numbers. I can provide them if you... I don't know if you see that report, if you're interested in that at all, it breaks it down on why they're coming into the shelter, whether they've been impounded, picked up as strays or owner turn-ins. I don't know if you're interested in those numbers, I can provide them if you are or I can have them provided to you so that it's not at a council meeting if you're if you're interested. I did I did want to put in one thing for span neuter and that is, as as Council Thompson said, the RPASCAZ thrift store has generated a substantial amount of money that will be issued back out to the community. It's the community that donates the merchandise, it's the community that runs the store, it's the community that purchases the merchandise, therefore, the community will get the money back in span neuter assistance. So, I'm hoping that we can see those numbers go down again. As part of our agreement, we house the animals for three to four days at the animal shelter and then they become the property of the humane society. There have been a couple incidents in this past year where we have housed them quite quite longer. In fact, there was one particular incident where we housed two animals on court ordered impound and they were there for eighty-six days. And that is a concern that that hopefully in the future we can address a little bit differently because when we do house those animals, they're not the property of the animal shelter, therefore, their care is different and I don't believe that it's fair to the animals to be housed for that long without companionship. So, do you have any questions on the report?
Counselor Beddoeson.
It does show the intake of dogs and cats from the town. Is there any indication of, I mean, it's the intake, but the question is, is how many owners pick them up and, I mean, I have little questions like that and is there a report or any information I can get on, you know, if animals are adopted, how many are euthanized? Is that something I can get from you separately?
Yes, yes, it sure is. Yeah, we have three different categories of incoming. They have, we have impounded, we have stray and we have owner turn-in. And then on the outgoing, we have adopted, we have returned to owner and euthanized. And yes, we can provide that information. I think that's on the report that Chief Reynolds gets.
I'll talk with the chief.
And yeah, and we can provide you with a copy of that also if you'd like that. I have the numbers here, but I can, it would probably be easier for me just to provide it to you.
I'm impressed, though, that with, as you noted, the slight increase, it's still going downwards. Since two thousand and seven, there has been a decrease every year with exception of twenty ten.
Yes, and I was recently preparing a display for the public library, doing a timeline history of the humane society and there was a newspaper article in nineteen seventy-seven that said that the average intake at the humane society was two to three hundred animals a month. And so, that's down considerably from that time period also, which I think is very good.
Very nice.
Any other questions on that?
What do, if you graph the the town statistics with the county or at least Buddy's geographical range, it's not county, it's a little bit more than that, what is the county in the book? Is it, do you have the same trend?
Pretty much the same trend. The the intake is a little bit higher and I think impounding is a little bit higher and also the owner turn-in is a little higher, but pretty much the same. And there is a downturn there in the county as well. Slight, but a downturn, which we're grateful for. Any other questions?
I I find it interesting that the spread, dog to cat, is quite significant on most months and not completely consistent, but if you go past years, when that spread flips and cats become higher, it's almost consistent that month every year. Is there, is there a reason?
Yeah, warm, warm weather. Warm weather and and particularly in the feral cat population and the stray cat population, the food supply is more plentiful when spring comes around, the females come into heat more, they produce more. So, generally, a few weeks to a month and a half after the weather starts to warm up is generally when we'll see an increase and then again in the fall.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Heidi.
One more thing I would like to add real quick along the lines of our potential fire season is the humane society does have a disaster plan in place, as you well know, in the event that, an unfortunate event, that people do have to evacuate their residents. Not all evacuation centers allow pets and we do open up and we do take in dogs and cats and have been known to take in emus and goats also. And we will house them during the disaster until the people can come back and pick them up and that's free of charge to the community.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is under item B, Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce's Tourism and Visitor Center Quarterly Report by Sissy McAndrew, Executive Director. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors, staff and community. It's great to be here this evening. As you know, in August, the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber became the fulfillment organization for the visitor center. And since that time, you do have a report in your file. Through December, we actually hosted six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight people through the visitor center. The majority of that actually was kind of resting on our lord because we did not have marketing in place. Julie Manacuchy is with me this evening from the Arts and Cultural District and she will be following up and explaining to you the marketing and tourism plan that's in place right now. I did want to recognize the fact that this is really a partnership and we are really working for the good of the community. We have at the visitor center now, which is funded through the Silver City Rogers Act. Arts and Cultural District, Main Street still has an office there, the thought work in Mexico, Green Chamber is there and then, of course, the town's participation. I'm going to take you somewhat through a little bit of a of a tour this evening because, of course, the pictures speak a thousand words. Part of what we're doing now is we are really focusing on the fact that this is the Murray Ryan Visitor Center. There's been some confusion with the Silver City Grand County Chamber of Commerce still having a visitor center out in Marina Valley. So, we are trying to get people to recognize that we are the Murray Ryan Visitor Center in historic downtown. The other thing that you'll note here, as we get closer, the building is fourteen years old, so it really has been in some need of some TLC. We're real excited right now here on the exterior, it's looking a little weathered, but I understand the city is working with the Members' Region Arts Council and hopefully we will have a mural project taking place here on the front of the building this upcoming year and that's really going to change literally the face of the building and make it more welcoming. Another thing you can note here on the front door, we no longer have papers taped up there. In fact, we don't allow any Scotch painting on that front door. So, it's very welcoming when you come in, you can see them and our our host at the at the visitor center can see out, which makes it much more friendly. Also, when you come in, you're immediately greeted. You can see the pen on the clipboard sitting there and that's where we actually have people register. We find out where you're from, how many nights they're planning on staying and how they found out about Silver City. We've had people from all over the world and probably today when I looked through, the one from furthest away is from Budapest. So, that's pretty exciting. We've had entire busloads of people from England and, of course, people from all over the country. And we didn't have a lot of local people coming in to see what the visitor center is looking like because we have had a facelift. You'll also notice over on the left-hand side, we've had a display from the Western New Mexico University Museum, which is very, very important, as is the Silver City Museum. This is something when people come in after about twelve o'clock in the morning, it's almost too late to go up to the cliff wall. So, what we try to do is get them to stay in Silver City, get acclimated for the first day and see our sights and then plan their their tours out of the city the next day. This is also helping us to extend the number of nights that people are staying here in Silver City. Over to the right, we actually have on the counter the walking tour for the mural project and this is really another key feature that people love walking downtown. When they come in, they get a map of Silver City with the highlighted area of downtown and then we immediately go and get them into the main street brochure, which has a blown-up version of downtown and a list of all the businesses. So, people are immediately getting acclimated. We also find out what information they're interested in. So, we're now driven by the tourists. So, here is one of the literature racks directly to the right of the post. And what we have first on the left-hand side is all the information about lodging, whether it's a motel, whether it's a B and B, whether it's an RV park. So, they've got all of that literature in one place. When we go to the right side, we've got information about cuisine and we're and we change the thought there because one of the key features, we have a lot of fine dining, a lot of independent businesses, so we're really finding out, are they interested in Mediterranean food, are they interested in Mexican food? And then we can make sure that they got the right information and know exactly where to go. We also have information about galleries and that's another key feature, of course, is the arts and cultural aspect. When we go over to the other wall, we get into more of the natural resources and culture. So, we're starting to talk more about the national forests, the parks, the trail of mountain spirits seen in Byway, which is very, very important. That's the old inner loop. So, it's nothing new, it's just got a new name. And luckily through that committee, they've come up with four different guys, one on geology, one on the pistons, another on mining and another on Fort Bear. So, people are really getting a lot of education and then if they come over to the right side, they get more information about Silver City and our outline sites. And of course, we've got million billing and a lot of times people will go and take that placard and get their photo taken with you. We also have information to the right there, that's information about other communities around New Mexico and other sites. And then the rack off to the back there is actually certified, which is a commercial rack, and that has some information about El Paso and Tucson and Arizona. So, people can really get the information and be able to to know more about where they're going. Another thing that we have put in our proposal that we're pleased, we have Wi-Fi and that's made a huge difference for people. They no longer have to go hot. We want to thank the Silver City Library because for a long time, we were sending people up there if they needed to check their their email, but now we have Wi-Fi, the staff uses that and the visitors are using it as well. In your package, you've got information about the breakout by month. This is making it showing us by day. And we are even tracking it as far as morning. We have two shifts. We're open Monday through Saturday from nine until five and Sunday from ten until two. Monday to Friday, Monday through Saturday, we keep the time from nine until one and then the shift changes from one until five. And it really varies. We aren't seeing any specific trending that we get more people in the morning or more people in the afternoon. And that's interesting information, but we are seeing Sundays, we we did not get a lot of people. We're not really promoting Sunday too much anymore and we're talking about what we should be doing in the future as far as marketing to come on Sundays. But still, you're seeing basically about two hundred and forty people that came to our service and had we not been there, they would not be able to have information about Silver City. At two o'clock, when food's closed, we direct them up to the Silver City Museum, Silver City Museum and they're open until four o'clock. We also have literature outside so they can pick up maps, pick up information about the community and hopefully come on back. This is showing the new computer that we have and we've got the new website up that we were going to talk to you about. This is actually another one of our volunteers here, he was sorry when he hasn't been getting into any of the photos, so I want to thank Ron for closing here. But one thing we found is there's a lot of materials, birding guides, some of the national forest materials that they're no longer publishing because of budgetary constraints. So, we actually have links to where if somebody's looking specifically for information on campgrounds, we can immediately get them out there to that information and there's a printer attached to this where they can print that information and have a hard copy of it with them. So, this is really good one up last week and it's really a pleasure and a lot of people are enjoying that. This is a couple I just walked in on him to get photos, they're from Northern Illinois and you can see he's he's on his handbell and he's on his laptop and they've been staying for eight days and they've been back to the visitor center twice, he's alive. And just really appreciated having that chance. And they came in and spent over an hour just sitting, relaxing and enjoying this thing. I also want to thank Manzoni Ridge, they came in and helped furnish the building and you can see just how lovely it looks. We also had things repainted and that that's added along. One of the benefits of having us there is to really help support the council and the city as far as teaching people about sustainability and recycling and a lot of what our our community is moving forward in. And here we've got the solar carpentry structure and new for some tourists that enjoy being able to carp in the shade. And we also, inside the visitor's center now, this is a kiosk that was put up by the Office of Sustainability and this is the office staff over here and then we've got two of our volunteers on the right. It's got an explanation above the the computers and then it's actually showing two different graphs, one that's actually an image of all of the different solar collectors, showing how much they're producing. And then the other is a graph down on the bottom that actually shows how much power has been produced over a century period. There'll be a press release coming out that we actually are saving energy for the visitor's center. And these are the two meters, the one over on the left is the one that's calculating our consumption, the one on the right that we make that a tandem, that's actually running backwards. And so, that's the power that's being generated from the solar panels. This, again, is attracting people. They come here and they see that our community is really moving forward and they're saying, well, I've been looking for a place like this, tell me more. We're getting ready to do the new visitors and relocation guide and this is a whole different format than we've done before with community guides. Again, focused specifically to the visitor. And when I mentioned relocation, a lot of times when they come in, they'll pick up the real estate books and they want to drive around on their own, but they don't know what the different neighborhoods are. This is a publication that Cia Publishing had back in, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, a long time ago, but just a wonderful piece. And down in the bottom, there's a map that's color-coded for different neighborhoods and then up above, it talks about the neighborhoods, it talks about the price range and the age of the buildings. And we've got the Silver City Regional Board of Realtors helping them update the pieces and this will actually be part of the comprehensive guide. We're going to continue to write editorials, we're going to continue to help market the town of Silver City, but I think the one thing that we all know is a word of mouth is the best thing and we've got a lot of people now that are leaving Silver City and knowing their friends about it and we're seeing that in the in the data that we're bringing, getting in from the visitor's center, is people are continuing to consider Silver City as a place to come visit and a place to come live. We also this evening, Julie has a packet of information, we just received it out on the press today and they must have known we had this meeting. This is a new brochure and this is a piece that we use with every visitor that comes in. It talks about the annual events broken out by month, it talks about our temperature ranges and then a lot of the wonderful, wonderful recognitions that we receive as a community. So, hopefully you can see we're we're moving forward, we're feeling very, very positive. It's a happy place to go into and if you haven't been through, I'd really encourage you to to come on by. If people have nonprofit organizations and they're looking for a place to hold a meeting, we do have some boardroom in the back and depending on the schedule, you can come in and use that space. And I think Julie's going to introduce her staff that she now has back in the Arts and Cultural District, but it's really working out well. We feel we've made some great segue and we hope that we're meeting your expectations and the expectations of the community. Are there any questions at all?
Sissy, I'd just like to point out that I I appreciate your participation in the development of the Grand County Economic Development Plan. We we attended a meeting the other day and you mentioned in your presentation that people are, say, well, tell me more. And this this plan, the way that they're benchmarking Silver City against other like communities as well as some that are are better than us, truly is giving us a a good view so that when we tell people what we are, that, one, we're honest and we're not a, we're not we tell people what we are, that, one, we're honest, and we're not for everybody. I mean, it's just, not everybody will be happy here. But I think you've provided very valuable input into that process. And I really look forward to seeing the final product. I was taking several notes on where people are moving here from, where people are going to. And interesting was some of the discussion on where people lived at work here, which was pretty much all over the Southwest. And I don't know how that works, but they're commuting to Silver City, as well as the many that commute outside of Silver City. And I really think that having that picture is going to help guide our marketing of our community in a more focused manner as well. Thank you. Counselor Benson.
I want to thank you for, I think, the spend of quarterly presentations that you've been giving us. And I appreciate that, knowing what's going on and how things are coming along down there. And I know Julie has some more information to give us, but I really appreciate it. It gives us a sense of, and the community, how the lodger tax funds are being utilized that we provided. Thank you.
Counselor Rip.
I like the idea that you're going to have it on mural on the building? Is it going to be the whole building?
It's just really amazing. I think it's just the front entry area. She's already, they normally commission an artist to develop the plan. And I think it's the front entry way of the building. And I'm not sure if she was looking at wrapping it around the inside or not. I think the package might be, I think, a little bit of a...
Thank you.
The Rosa couldn't hear that. They will be keeping the council informed as they come up with the development of that plan. Well, it's now my great pleasure, and I'm going to order the package, to introduce you, Julie, including who is the Arts and Cultural Director and also Silver City Director, Terrell.
Sissy's always a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best. Good evening, and happy centennial to Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Seb. And thank you again for inviting us and allowing us to prepare quarterly reports for you. Can you hear me?
You will.
Included in the quarterly report are some ads, ads that we've recently placed. And I think we have a few on the PowerPoint, too. I'm just going to try to hit the high points. I attended a TANAM marketing conference meeting in Albuquerque, and Tourism Secretary Monique Jacobson presented concepts for a new marketing plan for the state of New Mexico, which is going to be unveiled in April. And based upon the findings in the New Mexico Tourism Department's strategic plan, the Silver City Arts and Cultural District... Okay. Okay. It's coordinating a large portion of advertising and promotions to align with the efforts of the state in their quest to accelerate New Mexico tourism by focusing on travelers with an adventurous spirit and a thirst for authenticity. And the mayor said it well, you know, maybe we're not for everybody, but the focus group's findings have revealed a dynamic venture traveler profile. And based upon these personality types, the state has gone to great lengths to define an aggregate fit with the types of visitors that we're seeking to attract, not only statewide, but in our community. Is this better? The positive changes at the state level to fuel advocacy by creating synergy between regions and towns throughout New Mexico is key to the success of the Silver City Arts and Cultural District's marketing campaign. By being involved in the beginning of this refocused mission from the state, we feel like we're better able to position Silver City and Grant County as a vibrant cultural tourism destination. And we are really happy that Monique Jacobson and her staff have taken a real interest in our marketing plan, which promotes effective and efficient marketing between multiple organizations to create a stronger, more targeted marketing presence. So with the state co-op funds and the town of Silver City's lodger tax funds, this offers us an unprecedented opportunity for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District to promote a countywide cohesive marketing campaign, which you'll see in your package. We've already begun that. And as we reported in the last quarterly report, the campaign slogan is "Find Yourself in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico." And it's not all about just not finding yourself here, but finding your spirit, finding your purpose, finding your adventure. It's more than a play on words. It encompasses a whole marketing campaign. This year, the co-op grants were not announced until December, which kind of gave us a little bit of a delay in placing some of the ads. But right now, we're really cranking them out. We also started from ground zero. We started from scratch, renegotiating and negotiating new contracts, because when we walked in the door and took over this, basically, we didn't have a piece of paper. So we've, Michelle Gills, who's with the Tour de Hila, she's in the audience, has recently become our marketing assistant. And we also have Sherri Logan, who is in the audience as well, and she's become our office manager. So together, we have a really great, dynamic team. And we're, like I said, we started from ground zero, but right now, I think we're well underway with the amount of ads that we're producing. We've also acquired the services of a savvy social marketing expert and a local web designer. And we've developed a new website. We have a current website, but our new website will be launched on, hopefully, February 1. And the official tourism website URL domain name is going to be silvercitytourism.org. So everything you need to know about, or want to know about Silver City tourism, merchants, dining, lodging, businesses, everything is going to live on that website. This website is greatly amping up, is greatly going to be amped up with a social marketing presence. Right now, we've incorporated Facebook and Twitter, and we're trying to really make this mobile-friendly. So stay tuned for that. We will let you guys know when the new website's going to be available. Is that better, Cynthia? Thank you. So one purpose of the Silver City Arts and Cultural District is to serve as a central location for organizations to coordinate their events throughout the year. It's something that the Silver City ACD has been doing. It's part of their mission. It's part of what they've been doing for the past few years. And we've seen an increase in organizations coming to us and wanting to partner. And so this, we feel like, will help us promote events throughout the year, and not just in like a concentrated part of the year, say in the spring. So we're real happy about this. We've also partnered with Welcome Newcomers in Tucson to make brochures available at the Tucson Airport and with the Right Start Program for families at the Air Force Base there. So this is something new that we're, that Michelle actually has been instrumental in setting up. We're really proud, happy about this. We're taking a special interest in the lodgers. We have made appointments and seen most of them. We're trying to sit down and talk to them about their concerns, their visions, listening to the merchants about what they would like to see us do. And I think that we're receiving a real positive response from these people. I don't know that in the past, if this has been done, I'm not sure, but right now, they're very happy that we are taking an interest. And we are including merchants and dining and lodging in a much more visible way than I think was done in the past. We are going to implement the Silver City Roving Ambassadors Program. It's under development. You'll be hearing more about that. We're going to launch that in the spring. We're also going to launch a citizen journalist element, which is being developed and will be added to our website. I did include an overall marketing and promotion synopsis of the ads that we're creating right now. I won't go through that, but if you have any questions, feel free to inquire or contact me, and I'll give you a little more information. Next quarter, we should be able to provide the metrics regarding the measurement of these ads. We're starting to see leads come in, and we do have someone in place that's going to really be researching these leads. And we'll provide those metrics, and also the impact of our social marketing. We would like to invite the community, local experts in the fields of birding, culture, history, outdoor activities, ecotourism, to submit editorials for consideration. We know that there are a lot of people out there that know a lot about Grant County and are experts, and we welcome their input. Our phone number at the visitor's center is 575-538-5555, and the ACD number is 575-538-5560. So do you guys have any questions or comments for me? Sissy, could you put me at the ads?
Hi, good to meet you.
Oh, okay. Well, you guys have a sample of some of the ads. And if you like, I can send you a file of all of the ads. I don't know if you want to look at those, but...
Just in quick review, I think the ads are very fresh and new for Silver City, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate that there's an ad in there that specifically targets the Wild, Wild West aspect. We've had many discussions over, many Europeans have quite the fascination with the Old West, and we don't tend to market it. And hopefully, over time, we can actually develop more resources.
Thank you.
So when they get here. I do appreciate the ads, as well as, I believe I found on Alba One, that they were paid for, or partially paid for by the lodger tax. Thank you. Any other? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Item C under Reports, Police Statistics 2011 by Police Chief Ed Reynolds.
Mayor of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come up and provide statistical information on data gleaned from our systems 2011. I might want to put forth that these stats will be on the police department's website tomorrow and be available. Silver City Police Department's website is silvercitypublicsafety.org. We've moved away from the Italian website and have our own website, Neo. This is the first half of stats that I'm going to provide to the city council. The second half of the stats is going to have quadrant stats, the actual arrest adult and juvenile stats, and also citation breakdown. So that will come before the next council meeting and be provided. The statistical information is derived from the department's offense reports, crash reports, computerated dispatching system, records management system, and in part, the municipal court records management system. Can you guys hear me okay? Am I yelling loud enough?
I can hear you. I hear you, but...
Okay. Now, this report's only going to take about two hours, though. You know, I'll try and breeze through it.
No, it won't.
I'm kidding. I'm actually kidding. Shouldn't take too long to get through it. The statistics are produced and refined using the latest Excel programs for the purpose of tracking monthly, quarterly, six-month, and yearly statistics. Purpose of these statistics is to provide information to the department employees, city manager, city council, and citizens at large. The purpose behind providing that to citizens at large also includes community organizations such as the Health Council, who is interested in some of the stats pertaining to domestic violence, et cetera, over the last few years. Additionally, it is used to identify areas of concern and allocate manpower to those areas of concern, provide initiatives and aggressive programs to impact those issues. At its basic form, it is an ongoing weekly evaluation at the mid and upper level management to determine needs and actions. It is also for the purpose of providing internal accountability, productivity, and in the end, to reduce number of crimes and crashes within Silver City. Some of the reporting documents are not represented here. Those documents that we use internally are employee accountability forms, which allow us to track productivity. Each employee is held accountable for the main purpose of one important thing. That is, to make our community safer for those who live here and visit here. The information is being put together with assistance from employees of the department, specifically Susan Look. She's Records Clerk. Millie Bessie, Field Services Secretary, and Captain Terry Forten, Perry's Support Services. There's a disclaimer that comes along with any statistical information. As an example, in the December stats, you can take a look at it, and the simple assaults indicate 21 for 2011, and this is just as an example. For December 10th, there was 10 for 2000, I'm sorry, for 2010. In the program, it indicated a 52% increase. Well, actually, it's 110% increase. The formula, for some reason, there was glitches when I was putting this together. Another example is the citation warnings issued for that month. That's actually a 300% increase instead of a 75% increase. So in consideration of all the stats that I'm providing, there's probably about a 2% error rate in the statistical information I'm providing. Overall, the presentation will be on the 2011 stats comparison 2010. I also have included the stats back to 2008 for comparison. I will not cover every category for all the years, but may refer to the previous years on specific areas. 2011 saw a decrease in the number of index crimes, which are the murder, non-negligent manslaughter, forcible rapes, robbery, simple assaults, aggravated assaults, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. Those are the uniform crime reporting that we send off to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. We have seen a decrease in these overall stats since 2008. Additionally, information is between 2007 and 2008, in other words, a comparison between 2008 and 2007, there was a 3.31% increase in these areas. But since 2008, we have had a combined decrease of 15% in the crime index area. So that's a good decrease. However, we're not totally happy with it. Between, comparison between 2009 and 2008, there was a 3.08% decrease. Comparison between 2010, 2009, there's a 3.65% decrease. For 2011 compared to 2010, there was an 8.27% decrease for a combined total of 15%. Statistically, which backs up the decrease, there was a reduction in the number of offense reports taken during 2011 compared to 2010. 2011 offense reports were 1,746 total. For 2010, there was 1,970. For 2010, there was 1,970, for a 12% decrease approximately. And you have those stats in your 2011 comparison. Additionally, in comparison, 2009 also, there was 1,980 offense reports taken during that year. Statistical information, if you'll take a look at the 2011 stat comparison to 2010, if you take a look at the calls for service, which are important area, along with the self-initiated calls, and the total, we had a 9% increase in number of calls this year compared to 2010. That was 13,720 calls for service compared to 2010, 12,484, which was a 9% increase again. Self-initiated calls, which are activities initiated by the police officer, as an example, traffic stops, citizen contacts, any activity that is produced by the officer was 27,538 compared to 2010, which was 25,163, for an 8.62% increase. I'm not going to go through all these stats. These are just the main ones that I want to hit, and then if there's any questions, then I'd be more than happy to answer those. Citations issued this last year, which is another area which we'll discuss when we get to the traffic crashes, was 11,105 citations issued. Those included written warnings, parking citations, and sites in the court or penalty assessment. Compared 2010, there was 10,737 citations issued. That was a 3.31% increase. Total number arrests, 1,081, compared to 2010, 967, for a 10.55% increase. Motor vehicle collisions, and I'll get into that a little bit more here towards the end of the report. There was 547 total compared to 540. So, we had an increase, and I'll tell you right now, I'm not happy with it, but there is extenuating factors that play into that. We originally, when we started 2010, our goal was to reduce crime by 10% and reduce traffic crashes by 10%. We didn't reach that goal on traffic crashes, but I'll cover that in a few minutes. Dropping down to murder and non-negligent manslaughter, we had one this year which was out of a domestic violence. It was a murder-suicide. 2010, we didn't have any homicides. 2009, we didn't have any homicides either. Forcible rapes, 13, we're down one by the previous, from the previous year. The robbery, we had four reported, six in 2010, which was decreased in that area as well, which by consideration is a 50% decrease. Simple assaults were down as well. The aggravated assaults were down. Burglaries, which represented residential and business burglaries only, was down by one this year. That's another goal that we'll work on to try and reduce this next year. Larcenies decreased 383 compared to 2010, which was 422, which was a 10% decrease. So, if you take a look at the motor vehicle, we have 23 motor vehicles stolen this year reported compared to 2010, which was 27. 2009 had the same number, 27. When I first started in 2005 as the chief of police, there was 53 total stolen motor vehicles in Silver City. So, we've reduced that significantly over the period of time. Domestic disturbance tend to be a hot topic continually throughout the years. Domestic violence calls for service, which is 516 compared to last year, which was 555, which is a reduction in 7.56%. In 2011, out of the total number of calls for service, which was the 516, there was 117 offense reports produced in this area alone, generated, and 94 individuals arrested for domestic violence, arrested or charged, which means that a criminal complaint was filed in court. In 2010, there was 133 offense reports made on domestic violence, and there was only 90 arrests. So, we have a reduction in the number of severe incidents requiring reports, but we had an increase in the number of arrests out of those incidents compared to the previous If you go to the traffic, well, let me explain one more thing on this. Silver City Crime Index totals was 810 compared to 877, which again was an 8.27% decrease. Below that, you have a crime index totals per population. I included the crime index totals at 10,000, which is the first column, and 15,000, which we fill as a service population. So, the likelihood of a citizen being involved in the highest category, which is larceny for 10,000 people, is 3.83% of the population, and it declines from there. I feel we're doing a good job in this area, but we'll again attempt to reduce that by another 10% this next year.
These numbers don't necessarily reflect a verified incident, except the murder that you spoke of, correct?
If you're talking about the index crimes, how I obtain those index crimes is I go through the offense reports each month, and I get the statistical information from them. So, in other words, for, if you take a look at December, if you take a look at for December, there was 12 burglaries, residential and business. So, I go through, and I have files for burglaries. I have files for larcenies. I have files for criminal damage, et cetera, et cetera. So, those reports I count up to determine. So, this area right here is represented by those index crime.
One, that's got to be a very depressing file to look at. Two is what, it says 216 simple assaults. Was that 216 assaults that were reported to the police department, or 216 assaults that your officers found to be a valid complaint of assault?
Excellent question. Those 216 are the ones that created a report. That doesn't mean that that wasn't the number that was reported. So, anytime there is a report of an example, an assault, if it's a verbal assault, there may not be a report produced on that. And I'll give you an example. Yeah, I don't have it on my report. If you take a look at, let me use this as a better example on this. If you take a look at the arms, I'm sorry, the alarms represented, the reported, that's a gross number that is in the CAD system, computerated dispatching system. If you go down to injuring or tampering with a motor vehicle, that's a total number that was reported, gross report, calls for service. That doesn't necessarily mean each one of those calls for service generated a report, because it may not be, if a vehicle is saved, it may not rise to a injuring or tampering, but that's what the call is designated as, a injuring or tampering.
So, the actual number could be higher or lower?
Correct. Well, no, maybe higher, but not lower, because again, I count all the offense reports in this index area.
So, it's just, it's just the ones that have the asterisk by them that are total number of CAD calls that could possibly be lowered?
The number of offense reports related to injuring or tampering or criminal damage to property, what, domestic violence is a prime example. There was 515 for the total year, but there was only 117 reports generally. So, the other approximately 400 didn't rise to the point of needing any type of documentation other than the computer or the CAD entry, period.
Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, that clears it up like mud.
No, I understand it much better.
Okay.
Counselor Madison?
Just a question. You said that 115 of the domestic disturbances had a report? I'm sorry. Clarify what you just said to the mayor, and then explain to me where in this report does it say that specific number of domestic disturbances had a? Because I'm trying to figure out where that number is in the report. I just, I get confused a little bit about where it's in here.
Okay. If you look at the domestic violence, domestic disturbance...
Right.
...report, those are the total number of call, CAD calls, and those are all calls for the president of domestic violence.
Right. And where's that subset you talked about that went further than the call?
Presidential information.
Oh, it's not in here.
The total report, the government...
Okay. Thank you.
So, I think if we find your start, which is a month by month, which indicates nothing post the great project, assault, and assault and harassment, which is the E. Now, D and B, partners, programs, larceny, and these are all of them, the focus of our community. If you look at the bottom of the home screen, you see the total number of domestic violence and assault, which is 272.
Got it. Thank you.
One last document I'd like to just cover real quick, which, and again, if there's any other questions on, example being the quarterly reports that I provided, the six month reports, first half, second half, as a side note, the last six months of the year was our most active year, part of the year. I won't cover any more information on that. If you go to the month-by-month and year-end analysis of traffic crash reports. If you take a look at this document, gross calls for service for categories, traffic crashes, all categories, which is every CAD computer-generated entry by dispatch was 807. And that's the easiest way I can explain it, because not all crashes generated a report. Compared to 2010, there was 837 total gross calls for service in all categories. This is a breakdown, and I won't go through the first page too much, but this is a breakdown between roadway crashes and private property crashes. The second page is the more important page, which gives the total stats for roadway crashes, which for 2011 was 412, and total roadway crashes for 2010 was 401. We spent a lot of time enforcing traffic rules and violations, ordinances, et cetera, traffic ordinances. Again, we wrote 11,105 citations. We were extremely active. We even put together programs and initiatives where we put officers, a wolf pack team, if you will, out to impact red light violations and speeding violations in our worst crash area, which continues to be 180 East from, actually, Silver Heights and Hudson this year, all the way out to 32nd Highway. So, we spent a lot of time out there. Not only do we enforce the traffic out there, but you see the state police out there as well, because they realize there's an issue out there. So, I don't know how many citations they issue out there, but you see them doing traffic stops all the time.
To make a point on that area, I've already sent you an email requesting this data that there was an increase in traffic crashes on that stretch since the construction and the lights had gone in, if I remember discussions in the past correctly. I did have a meeting the other day with Secretary Dominguez of the Department of Transportation in Representative Martinez's office with Senator Morales and a contingency from the county. And they will be looking to see on those lights if there was interconnects installed or when they put them in. If there's not, it's a little bit of a problem that they can't synchronize them. If the interconnects were put in, he says they will get them synchronized promptly. Currently, they have a sign on that says that they're timed for 35 miles an hour. They're not timed at all. They're not even connected to each other, and we pointed that out to him. He promised us that he would work to address that issue promptly.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. As a side note, that we've been in touch with the district office in Dimming numerous times about this issue, and they indicated to us that it was synchronized. So, I hope we have some success in that area.
I won't get into that part of the discussion.
I'll tell you what, that area's killing us for traffic crashes. If you take a look at the last section on that, 2011 saw 70, out of 547, we had a 75.32% roadway crash compared 24.68% to private property crash. As compared to 2010, there were, we had an increase, slight increase over 2010 on the roadway crashes, but a slight reduction on private property crashes. crashes. Uh, percentage of crashes for, uh, number of injuries went up ten percent, Fisher. So that's why we try to impact speed. Speed equates to, uh, the number of severity of injury. So we enforce that quite, quite a bit. Any questions on this document before I move to the next one? Last, uh, area that I'll cover, uh, and that I'll close, is the two thousand and eleven roadway and parking lot crashes. If you take a look at the, uh, number one, two thousand and eleven, uh, intersection, it ended up being Silver Heights and Hudson this year, with twenty-eight, uh, crashes. Last year, it was one eighty east and Rose Hill Road with twenty-six. But if, running down through this, the top, uh, six are one eighty east. And actually, if you consider Silver Heights and Swan part of that corridor, then the top, five of the top six are in that. Silver Heights and Hudson is actually part of that, that state road, one eighty, and intersects with another state road, ninety, on that. So, reality is, the top six are on that corridor, one eighty east through to Thirty Second Street. So again, that's why we spent a lot of time out there. Again, um, Walmart comes in number one, is the, uh, location for the most private property crash, which are fifty. However, it's reduced from, uh, fifty-nine in two thousand and ten. And the rest of it, I don't think I need to go into unless there's any questions on it.
Any questions?
Do you have any idea why Silver High doubled? Do you have any idea why, uh, Silver High doubled?
I do, and I, and I'll present, definitely, I'll present a couple of different, uh, issues that, uh, has popped up in this area. A couple of, uh, those traffic lines, uh, Walmart, the, uh, to, uh, not influence, actually, uh, to, uh, shoot cars.
He, he actually asked about Silver High, the high school?
The high school?
Oh, Silver High School, uh, 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 the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the least part of the, the, uh, crashes happened, was pretty tight. Um, part of, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, time, part of that, uh, uh, so, and we, uh, that's probably, um, institution, most of the time, you know, part of the crash, you know, that , uh, I, I, I talked to some of the, uh, 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 some of the, uh, uh, I think we're gonna have plenty of time to discuss one eighty east when DOT comes down to take another look at what may have happened. And, 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 uh, 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 coming to the situation, also, just like, uh, some of our, our units, uh, because, if you take a look at the department from now, the biggest issue was driving intention, uh, Houston, uh, back to, uh, the, uh, two thousand and five, uh, two, uh, driving intention, uh, don't go on that. Uh, the increasing, uh, use of cell phones, um, texting, uh, driving, uh, 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 future efforts, uh, so, uh, to, uh, uh, for, uh, 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 I see, uh, uh, for, uh, 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 what we want to do as a law enforcement partner, that this, uh, this, uh, sign, as you know, in totality, uh, this has got a deal of information, uh, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, in totality, was about one million, two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the loss, wages, revenues, et cetera. So that's a national, uh, 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 transportation, uh, so, what we want to do is, uh, kind of aggressive, um, kind of, uh, position, uh, in, uh, how, uh, where it's headed on it, uh, from the same kind of, uh, law enforcement officer, uh, you know, ten percent, uh, uh, comes, uh, you know, uh, so, uh, et cetera, uh, we, uh, because we invest in that, because the crash, et cetera. So, uh, so, uh, 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 on the board, I, I, in case, uh, 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 hours, to compact, uh, any of those, uh, 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 that's, that's money, uh, 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 however, there are not, nothing aggressive, uh, aggressive, uh, attack, uh, 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 I can bring you a cup of coffee and some, uh, 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 heads up, like, uh, attention to my, uh, but, uh, talking itself, uh, uh, texting, uh, according to, uh, the, uh, transportation, uh, that's equals to a, uh, 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 mission. So, I'm, I'm, uh, 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 uh.
Real quick, I know Counselor Madison wants to floor, but you really didn't know where I was going. The, in our meeting the other day, the secretary pointed out that the asphalt actually needs traffic on it to maintain itself. It's, it'll last longer if you drive on it. And the discussion came up in utilizing the shoulders as bike lanes, and as they go down and remodel one eighty south coming out of Dimming. So I pointed out that my texting while driving is helping to maintain the shoulders and the bike lanes. You're welcome. He didn't find it very funny either. So Counselor Madison?
Um, I was just gonna ask Chief if you have statistics, if you come before the council, if you're gonna have some statistics on the number of crashes that actually involve cell phones or texting. So, you know, 'cause there appears to be an increase, whether it's on private property or, you know, on public roadways, if you find, you know, cell phones to be part of the culprit in the, um, reason for those incidents of traffic. And, and what I would say is to bring to the table some statistics on those number of crashes that you've seen that cellphone has somehow in that traffic report stating that that is a potential reason for a driver intentive. Okay, I can't say it. That they were not attentive at the wheel, and that was part of the reason for the crash.
Uh, distinct, I mean, I must tell you, uh, start, uh, 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 the, uh, the intentions, uh, 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 it's invaluable to be discovered, uh, which also comes in, uh, 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 as to injuries, et cetera. Now, if you don't have a distinction, you track them, or, uh, et cetera, um, however, that, that's gonna be fine, uh, 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 I mean, I, I would like to see, I mean, personally, that sort of information.
I mean, I know it's inattention, but, I mean, if we can directly say that nine times out of ten, it's appears to be texting or cellphone use. You know, um, I mean, in Los Angeles, you know, you're on, it's someone eating, s- someone shaving, or putting makeup on. I mean, used to drive those roadways a lot, a long time ago, and dog in the lap, but, you know, there's always the issue of spilling a hot cup of coffee. So, that can create a lot of inattention, or be in the car. Just saying.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions? Thank you, Chief. Counselor Madison?
Uh, just a real quick, in this summary. Um, the department, the production is a result of the employees, both sworn and civil, civil, uh, civilian, working hard and being dedicated to the protection and service to the community. We have come a long ways since two thousand and five. I feel we are a more professional police department protecting and serving this community. Next time you see an officer, thank Helmer for the job they are doing. Goals and objectives I've already talked about, um, and again, uh, we work hard. We continue to, uh, maintain a high standard within the department. And if there's any other statistical information from the council, or, uh, from the general public that is requested, uh, we will be more than happy to put that together.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Madison?
Before I move for a short break, I just want to thank the chief, um, and the department for the excellent job they're doing in reducing crime, in increasing, um, citizen awareness, and, uh, um, actually calling in and notifying you about crime. And while not the, the, uh, goal of ten percent reduction in crashes, it's an admirable four percent reduction. So I wanna thank the department and officers for everything they're doing.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor of City Council.
I move for a short break.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, a second, take a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's try to keep it, uh, close to five. We will call this meeting in the Silver City Town Council back to order. Are you gonna forego your report?
Let it do it, let it do it. It's only gonna take you a minute, I'm timing.
Okay.
Okay, the Gabby Hayes well, we're down to four hundred and fifty feet. It's twelve, twelve hundred feet that we're gonna be building. So I wanted to let you know the status of, of that. Uh, the tennis courts, uh, they're completed for right now. They're actually being, uh, they will be completed for right now. Uh, they're gonna put a, a second surface on in the summer that they can't do now, but they are playable now. Uh, the baseball fields are about eighty-five, well, not baseball, because we've actually turned them into baseball and soccer fields. They're about eighty-five percent complete in the, uh, design. Uh, the, the clubhouse, they are in the process of moving the sheds down to the old landfill area. The park roof is under, uh, is under construction. Tenton Mountain View project is almost done. The CDBG project up on Chihuahua Hill is done. Um, Black Hawk, we were just awarded a grant to, to extend sewer out to Black Hawk. Uh, the purchase power agreement for the solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant, we will be bringing to our next council meeting. And the P M franchise, we will be bringing, hopefully, pretty quick.
Could you go over that one more time?
Please?
We'll record it. We'll play back the recording.
I'm scheduled for five minutes, just so.
Thank you. For two reasons. The next item on the agenda is actually under item number eleven, new business. Approval, disapproval of Town of Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. Mr. Stone, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Have an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which is as high as you can get. You have an unqualified opinion on compliance with federal regulations. You have no findings or comments. It's as good as it gets. If you remember last year, the state auditor made us put in a couple of comments, which they subsequently withdrew and said they were wrong. They transferred the personnel that had made us do that to an, to an alternative, uh, place. And so, and they apologized to us. So I have written in there, in the prior comment section, that they never should have been in there to begin with, and the state auditor had made us do it, and he agreed that they, they had messed up. Other than that, uh, and I can start reading on page one, or I can tell you that I'm through, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
I will, I will say that, I will remind the council it is an action item, though you gotta approve it or disapprove.
Thank you. I, I'll make a few comments, and I'll keep it short. I'm not gonna give you a time limit. One is, um, I, this is always the meeting every year, that we thank the staff, and Stephen's here, and Linda, and Linda, and all the crew down there, Alex, they're the ones that make this report clean every single year.
Absolutely.
And the six years that I've been the mayor, we have not had a justified finding. And I truly wanna send our appreciation to the staff that do the day-to-day work, and that utilize the resources throughout the year to make sure that we're doing things correct and legal, and that we have proper accounting. I also wanna thank the staff that I know that when our auditor shows up, town hall is prepared, and they're ready to provide the documents that are requested, and it definitely makes the auditor's job a lot less painful. And it's, it is noted by the council, and it is very appreciated that we pull this off every year, and...
Well, I think the reason they're ready for is they just wanna get us out of their hair, I think's the reason. I'm just teasing.
That may be true.
They, they are to be congratulated. I, I will have to second that. And some of you may not have been, been involved in other audits, but let me give you an example. Albuquerque Public Schools had a hundred and twenty comments last year. So, I don't know what the state average is, but it's not that high. But to go through an audit and not, of, of this magnitude, of this size, when you're managing sixty-eight million dollars' worth of assets, um, it, it really is incredible. It just doesn't happen. And they should be congratulated.
Well, I couldn't agree more. We do appreciate that you, that you do do our audit. I also think it's important to note, the findings that were in last year's audit, and the resulting correction as a, as a note in this year's audit, Alex did ask me if I wanted to push the issue and actually have our audit redone, and it was my opinion that it was truly of no value, rather than to put out a report that says I got six years of clean audit under, under my leadership, and pretty much the same staff has done it for that length of time, so...
And that was the right decision, because we were issuing a subsequent one, and we have made it very clear with the language in this audit report that those should never have existed.
So that's why those, those findings were not totally removed from the record, but are marked as inappropriate. Counselor Maronis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Stone, about how many man-hours did you take in this? Few hundred, couple hundred?
In, in the audit of the council of the city? Our budgets are around three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty hours.
You know, just as a general comment, um, about a dozen years ago, I, I worked with, uh, with Mr. Stone on, on some of his audit staffs, and three hundred man-hours of, you're sitting there with a group of, a handful of people, and you're looking through a lot of transactions, and just, and every one of them is being questioned, and if there's anything that looks funny, it, it's being brought to, uh, Mr. Stone as the lead auditor's attention, and, uh, I, I can't remember doing an audit where, um, where there was basically no findings, and, you know, it, it is amazing, and I appreciate, and I know that, uh, that this firm does a tremendous amount of work, and, and they don't wanna just give a clean audit just for clean audit sake. Uh, they're, they're not afraid to give findings.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move for approval of Town of Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2011.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor, I'll second that in a minute. There's a motion, a second, to approve Town of Silver City Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. Is there any discussion by the council? There's a motion, a second, seeing no discussion.
I was going to do that.
I like to do that on financial stuff. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Counselor Johnson.
Hi.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of bid 1112-13, library renovation. Mr. Brown.
Mayor Council, we now receive three bids for the renovation of the roof and HVAC system, as well as some additive alternatives for carpets, and I can't remember what the other names. But one of the contractors, Silver City Building, was deemed non-responsible, so staff would like to try to move forward, because this process has been going on for a long time. And what we would like to do is, is award the bid to CD General Contractors for the base bid, as well as active alternate number one, and contingent on the staff being able to negotiate with them and bring the, the cost of the project down within budgeted funds available.
Any discussion? Counselor Benson.
Just a question. So, we can award the bid and still negotiate downwards from there, without going back, going through the process again?
Well, if we're unable to come to an agreement with them, then we will put the project back out to, to bid. We'll have to scale the project. If there's some reason that we can't, and we find that it was because of design, or whatever it might be, we'll have to redesign so that we can get the project within budgeted funds, and then bring it back to you for re-award to, to whoever is the lowest bidder.
The procurement code does allow negotiations and modifications of the actual cost for by contract.
The only time we have a problem with the cost is if the cost ends up being, changes, end up being more than 10% than what was awarded.
With that, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve bid number 11/12-13, library renovation, per staff's recommendation to CD General Contractors, for a total of GRT of $6,300, okay, $600, $639,000, $674.36, contingent on successfully negotiating the project, cost of the project within budget. Is that appropriate, say it that way, or do you want me to rephrase that motion? Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? There's a motion, a second, to award bid 111213, library renovation, per staff recommendation to CD General Contractors, total of GRT of $639,674.36, contingent on the staff's ability to negotiate the price to within available funds, the budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of bid 111218, water pipeline. Mr. Brown.
Mayor Council, the town will receive two bids for the water pipeline. It's 700 feet of 12-inch downtown iron water line. And the purpose for the water line is, I don't know if you know up on Boston Hill, we've got that 12-inch water main that overhangs one of the entrances to one of the mine shafts. And about two, about three weeks ago, we had a second water break on that, on that, that piece of the main, and it is very dangerous for our staff to be hanging out there trying to fix that, that pipeline. So, what we're trying to do here is purchase the pipeline, and we are either going to install it ourselves, or, or have, have a contractor install it, but we're going to reroute it around the entrance and move it underground. So, it's staff's recommendation to award to the Low Bidder HD Supply Water Works Limited for $27,214 plus grocery receipts tax, for a total amount of $29,221.3.
Any discussion? Counselor Maronis.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of bid number 11/1218, water pipeline, as per staff recommendation to the Low Bidder HD Supply Water Works Limited, for a total amount of $29,221.3, which includes grocery receipts.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the discussion. There's a motion, a second, to approve bid 111218, water pipeline, staff recommendation to HD Supply Water Works Limited, for a grand total of $29,221.3, including grocery receipt stacks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of March 6, 2012, election workers. Ann?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm asking for the approval of the election workers for our next election on March 6. Many of them have worked our elections for many, many years. We've got some new ones, but they're all required to attend my election school, which will be held on March 1st.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the March 6, 2012, election workers, as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the March 6, 2012, election workers, as presented. Any discussion?
No.
I just like to make sure that we thank them, and that's such a critical part of the, the process function, and without the volunteers, it could definitely bring our, our government to a halt. So, it's, it is very appreciated by the council that these people take their time to both get educated and then volunteer for that. Thank you.
May I ask that you have an election...
Thanks. Since our last council meeting, we did have a declaration of a writing candidate. I have put it in the newspapers, but I wanted to announce it tonight, that we have one more individual that declared as a candidate and was certified. His name is Cody S. Petty, and it's for the elected position of mayor. Also, I want to talk about how folks that want to vote in our election need to get registered with the county clerk by February 7. If they have any name changes or address changes, they need to do that by the same date. And I, again, encourage everybody to take a look at our new district map, to make sure they're, you know what district they're in. They may have changed a little bit. Those maps are at City Hall, they're on the website, at our various public buildings, and they can call me if they have any questions. Absentee voting starts January 31 at City Hall, and early voting, early voting on machine will start on February 15.
Thank you. Counselor Benson.
I just have two questions. Ann, can you tell me if the county sent out a new voter registration cards, and at least new information to those voters whose districts changed after the redistricting that we did?
They told me that they were doing that, and it was probably a week and a half ago. So, I'm not sure, it's only to the ones that changed.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if people have actually received that.
And when did you say that voting began?
Absentee voting at City Hall begins January 31.
And is there information that anyone needs to know regarding about the writing candidate? Any special information that needs to be known about how that's done?
I didn't bring the criteria, but on the ballot for writing candidate for all four districts, the voters will just see a line that says "writing candidate." And on that line, they need to write Cody S. Petty, C.S. Petty, Cody Petty, some variation of his name. And at, at the end of the day, the voting machine, the ballots will go through and get counted by the voting machine, and those particular ballots, where people have written in a writing candidate, will go into a separate bin, ballot box. It's a secured ballot box within the machine. So, it'll go to a separate side bin. At the end of the evening, the election workers, all of them on this election, will have to hand count those ballots that have write-ins and verifying that people wrote in the name correctly within those four criteria that are listed in the state statute. And then that number may or may not necessarily agree with the voting machine tabulation for the write-ins, because the human beings are verifying. So, they'll have a little more work to do this year, telling the handwritten writing candidate.
I guess I just want to make sure that folks understand that they just can't write in anyone they want to.
No, and they can't try to give Mayor James Marshall a second vote by writing his name there. It has to be Cody Petty.
We can't vote for one.
Or anything else.
I never thought of that.
Thank you.
What happens if, like, the box by my name is selected and a write-in is selected?
That ballot is foiled.
So, people need to make sure and pay attention when they do that?
The, the machine will actually kick it back out.
Oh, okay.
So, they can be issued another ballot at that same time, you know, go through the process and, and be informed. They'll, they'll get their ballot back out, so they'll see that the machine is telling them, you can't vote for two. And they have to fill in the oval. They can't just write the person, the writing candidate's name. They have to fill in that oval, just like they would if they were voting for two.
Thank you. Back to where we were. I believe we have a motion, a second, and no further discussion to approve the March 6, 2012, election workers as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of resolution number 2012-03, a resolution of the Town Council of Silver City, New Mexico, authorizing the submission of a New Mexico 2009-2010 surplus Colonia's Initiative Fund application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division, and authorizing the mayor as the Town of Silver City's chief executive officer and authorized representative to act in all matters pertaining to the Town of Silver City's participation in the Colonia's Initiative application. Mr. Brown.
Mayor Council, this is a resolution authorizing a submitted application to further complete additional infrastructure at the Vista, the Plaza subdivision. It is going to be submitted in the Colonia's portion of the CDBG program. Under normal circumstances, DFA and the CDBG board do not allow you to submit two projects, one in infrastructure and one in Colonia's. You have to do one or the other, but this year, they have made allowances for housing projects to be submitted in either the infrastructure or Colonia's, and considering that we already have one infrastructure project, we're just going to submit this one and the Colonia's project. Yeah, portion of it. So, it's for $250,000.
Do you need to say anything, Mike?
I don't know what to do on this.
Good. Comments? Questions? Counselor Maronis.
In the, in the resolution on number three, is there, is there anything inappropriate with that number three, where it says the Town of Silver City's officials and staff? Would it be better read as just staff, or, or should it say officials and staff?
No, the, the words officials and, and then after the word staff, the word are should be changed to is. So, delete officials and, so it'll say the Town of Silver City's staff is directed to conduct any and all acts necessary, blah, blah, blah.
So, that would be included in the motion?
Yeah, you say you make the motion with the, to, to move for the adopted this resolution with the change in paragraph three to eliminate the words officials and, and after the word staff, change R to is.
Do you believe that would be appropriate?
Yes.
Counselor Rick? Do you have a question?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number 2012-03, a resolution of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, authorizing the submission of a New Mexico 2009-2010 surplus Colonia's Initiative Fund application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division, and authorizing the mayor as the Town of Silver City's chief executive officer and authorized representative to act in all matters pertaining to the Town of Silver City's participation in the Colonia's Initiative application, with the correction on number three, on the now therefore be it resolved, to read, "The Town of Silver City's staff is directed to conduct any and all necessary, all acts necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution."
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution 2012-03. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution 2012-03, a resolution of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, authorizing the submission of a New Mexico 2009-2010 surplus Colonia's Initiative Fund application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division, and authorizing the mayor as the Town of Silver City's chief executive officer and authorized representative to act in all matters pertaining to the Town of Silver City's participation in the Colonia's Initiative application. As amended to read on item number three, under now therefore, it should read, "The Town of Silver City's staff is directed to conduct any and all acts necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution." Having a motion, a second, no further discussion. Roll call.
Hi.
Counselor Ray.
Hi.
Counselor Johnson.
Hi.
Counselor Benson.
Hi.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is appointment of three members to the cemetery board, and we have three applications, Elizabeth and Miller, Ryder South, and Carl Scholl, and I, those are all three incumbents to the, to the cemetery board, and speaking with the chair, felt like they have served the cemetery board well, and would like to see them remain, and I would agree. So, with council consensus, I would appoint the three listed as members of the Silver City Cemetery Board. Any objection? Seeing no objection, they're so appointed. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of changing the next council meeting date from Tuesday, February 14, 2012, to Monday, February 13, 2012. And, sorry, the only reason that I requested that was I will be on my way to DC to discuss some issues with our federal delegation, the veteran... our federal delegation, the Veterans Administration, and Health and Human Services, as a part of my job, and we're advocating for better healthcare services for veterans is one of our primary issues, and I have to leave on the morning of the 14th, so, yeah, the council doesn't object, and that gives us about three weeks to notify the public, and is, did you get to check and see if this room would be available?
I'm waiting on that. This is available, but I'm only reserved in City Hall annex, just in case, so I'll let you know. And the legal notice, of course, will tell the public where it's at.
Counselor.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we are looking at, hopefully, 6:00 PM.
I would, I would not change the time.
Great. Thank you.
Any discussion? Anybody not available on the 13th? Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of changing the next council meeting date from Tuesday, February 14, 2012, to Monday, uh, February 13, 2012, at 6:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve changing the next council meeting date from Tuesday, February 14, 2012, to Monday, February 13, 2012. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next meeting will be on Monday, February 13, 2012, at 6:00 PM, hopefully in this room, but please watch the legal notice to make sure. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.